Awesome. Thank you. I'll call the meeting of the Advisory School Building Committee to order. It is 7:00. Can we have a roll call, please?
Amanda Drew.
Kate Cumnik.
Doug Soudell.
Lauren Ryans.
Brian DeChachio.
Rich Sitnick.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to adopt the minutes from March 31st. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Thank you. Any discussion changes or revisions? Oh, all right. I'll call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimously. Public comment is next on the agenda, and I will just remind everybody that there is a four-minute time limit. Anyone want to give public comment? Martha?
I thought it was 5:00. Go fast.
Oh. No doubt. You know what? Four might be the town where I work. Is it five here? Sorry, guys. Sorry. My brain's still in Newington.
I'm under five. I'm between four and five.
Do you need your name and address?
Yeah, Martha Caneely, 12 Fairmont Street. I'm here tonight to express my full support for the school building project and to thank the entire building committee for the work you've done to bring us to this point. I know it hasn't been easy, so I'm happy we can turn our attention to the many exciting ways this project will impact our children, our home values, and the reputation of our community for generations. I'm especially appreciative of the commitment the building committee has made to fairness by supporting equitable facilities for each of our school communities. One of the things that made it easier to get the high school referendum passed is that everyone in town got the same thing. No matter where you live, your children go to Weathersfield High School. Everyone has the same facilities, and the school has the same impact on all of our home values. Honestly, one of the biggest issues with the last referendum was that was not even close to being the case. The new Highcrest was going to be much larger than the other schools, and Hamner was going to also be new. It seemed like Webb and Emerson were getting spruced up, and then, of course, Charles Wright would be shut down, and our children would be sent to three different schools. As a former Charles Wright family, I can say that felt unfair. I was concerned about disinvestment in our neighborhood, the negative impact on our home values, and I was, and very honestly, I didn't feel like it would have been attempted with another school. I love Charles Wright. Our family was so lucky to be part of that school community, and I was proud to serve as the PTO president for two years. But it was frustrating because it could be so difficult sometimes to feel like our kids in our school were getting the fair shake, a fair shake. And I really hope that's different now, but it did feel like Charles Wright was always being short-changed. There were just, like, from my time there, so many stories. When my daughter was in kindergarten, both the Charles Wright and Hamner principals left within a few weeks of each other. About a month later, the wonderful Mrs. Akai was hired for Hamner. Meanwhile, Charles Wright had three interim principals. They hired someone permanently for us two years later. We were at Charles Wright for seven years, and during that time, we had five principals. People still talk about the skylight in our library. It was leaking, and the Board of Education set aside money for it in about 2006, but they just never did the work. Instead, it got boarded up. A group of us finally got them to do it around 2012, six years or so after it had been allocated. In 2010, there was an internal audit discovering funding specifically earmarked for our Title I students was diverted by a previous superintendent to district-wide programs, materials, transportation. I could go on. This is all compounded by the fact that we're home to some of the most vulnerable children and families in our community. Many of our families lack agency in these decision-making processes because of the language, because of language barriers and socioeconomic pressures. Close to 20% of Charles Wright students are English-language learners, and about 40% qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. So when a decision comes down that Charles Wright is going to be closed down and it's going to be the best thing for your school, for your children, it was hard to swallow. And, you know, I can, I get that sometimes this comes from well-meaning people who are trying to solve other district issues or school issues, but it was hard not to feel like my neighborhood was expendable. My property value is less important than other homes, than homes in other parts of town, and then under-investment or disinvestment in the north end of town is acceptable. And, you know, the last school referendum, I think you could see that voting District 6, where Charles Wright is located, used their voice to show exactly how they felt about that inequity. Only 36% of District 6 voters voted yes, the lowest percentage in town, and that's a place where I think you could reasonably expect 60% or of people to say yes to schools. For reference, the yes vote in District 6 was about 67% for the high school, which conversely was the highest. So that's my kind of long-winded way, over four minutes, of saying thank you for your commitment to equity and, of course, Charles Wright. It's the right thing to do for our students, our homes, and our community, and I will pragmatically say that I think it gets us as close as we possibly can, the school, the townwide commitment to equity, that I saw as one of the keys to success for the high school referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jennifer Curry, 162 Straddle Hill. To start, I'm in full support of the project, and I'm thrilled with the progress that is already occurring, so thank you to all of you. I realize that I should have asked a clarifying question on March 26th, but failed to, so here we go. I'd like to ask that the building committee work with the Board of Education and Central Office Administration to revisit the approved school calendars for the next two years. The reason I'm bringing this up now is that once renovation construction starts, my understanding is that school calendars should be as condensed as possible, leaving the longest summers available as work time. Michael Scott has talked multiple times about the 14-month renovation periods from mid-June to mid-August as a tight timeframe, but construction managers can do it. And this is assuming the light winters of late and not ones like between 2010 and 2015, where we had weeks of snow days. And while construction hopefully will start in the 26-27 calendar, I think that both the calendars need to be reviewed. This is not news to Board of Education members, as I have already brought up my concerns in general. Weathersfield Public Schools is taking a unique stance for the next two years, having two full weeks off at the December break. And while that sounds lovely, everyone should be aware that Monday, the 22nd, and Tuesday, the 23rd of '25, schools are closed, resulting in the earliest last day of school being June 16th, 2026. And Monday, December 21st, Tuesday, December 22nd, and Wednesday, December 23rd of 2026, schools are closed, with the earliest last day of school being June 15th, 2027. Two points on this. I have specifically asked in meetings and twice via email for an explanation of why we have decided to go this route with our calendars, what is the motivation or rationale, and received no specific answers from Superintendent Emmett. Two, four of our area, St. Dirk Schools, Crack Schools, Berlin, Cromwell, Newington, and Rocky Hill, all have approved their 25-26 calendars with school in session on December 22nd and 23rd. Currently, only Berlin has its 26-27 calendar published, and there is school on December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Knowing that our calendars for future years should be tight so that our summer renovations can be done with the least amount of time challenges, I am asking the school advisory committee to work with the Board of Ed and Central Office Administration to relook at the next two years, because I don't see a reason for starting an unexplained two-week break in December, when we are going to have to peel that back in future calendars. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Mazarella, 600 Walcott Hill Road. I listened to what Martha Caneely had to say. I think that she brought up some really good points about Charles Wright, but aren't we doing the same thing with the Webb, K through 4? We're eliminating a K through 4 in that neighborhood. You're doing away with basically one elementary school, going to a 5 to 6. Has that been brought up and discussed? Do you think you might lose votes in that district? I think it's something to consider. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, folks. I'm Doug Ovian, 56 Broad Street. I have a couple remarks I'll make first, and then I think I'd like to speak to a question, a couple questions that just came up. So far, I feel like the process that we've gone through has been a very positive one. It's helped us plan to return Webb to middle-grade use. It has helped us recognize the value that the town had for the Stillman site, for Standish Park, and Hamner School. And then it also helped to bring forward the possibilities that there might be for a school-and-park combination at Kaisha and Highcrest. Just last week, the sequencing was changed where Hamner went from number one to number five. And instead of acting on what felt like a big change right away, I, along with others, have been giving it thought. And the idea that more time needs to be given to plans for Hamner brought to mind that perhaps the sequencing should be revisited as well for Charles Wright and Emerson-Williams. And that's where I can help, I think, answer the concerns that were raised here. One is that, two years ago, three years ago, I supported the Charles Webb, Charles Wright neighborhood by opposing that referendum, because I felt a school in North Weathersfield should continue. But I think right now, Charles Wright sounds like a much more complex plan that should be paired with plans for all of North and East Weathersfield between Charles Wright and Hamner. In other words, more thought, I think, needs to go into both schools before we could say to the taxpayers, we have a well-thought-out solution for both schools. This is what we were told about Hamner, and I think the same applies, given the amount of work that is estimated for Charles Wright. One of the issues is that we haven't addressed the issue of whether enrollment equalization versus complementary enrollment between Hamner and Charles Wright is the best way to go. There's also the issue of the study that's undergoing, that is happening for the Pittkin Community Center, and also for the eventual status of the DMV building. All of these things are North and East Weathersfield factors that we can't know the answers to in just the next few weeks for something that has to be settled by June and then voted on this fall. We have the advantage of a whole 10 years to address these issues, and the best way forward for them may be to take Charles Wright and Hamner and address them in the second part of the referendum, the second referendum, when all these issues can be better thought out. In the meantime, we can look at Kaisha as a solution for the Webb district losing its elementary school, because the adjacent Webb district gets, the adjacent district in Highcrest gets a brand-new school that also serves Webb. Some of the other Webb children will go to Emerson-Williams. If Emerson-Williams goes third, families in the Webb district might feel better about the fact that their Webb, that their Webb children that go to Emerson-Williams are going to be better served. It sounds like the changes planned for Webb are not so great compared to what are planned for Charles Wright with the moving and of the cafeteria and gymnasium, that we might actually find ourselves in a situation where the overall cost might be less. Also, those first three schools are closer to Highcrest, closest to Highcrest as the swing school. So you might use Highcrest as the swing school for the first three during the first part of this project, and in the second three, there may be other solutions, pardon me, the second half of this project, there may be other swing school solutions that we would undertake that are better serving the neighborhoods of Charles Wright and Hamner in the far northeast part of town versus the sending all those kids to the far southwest. These are all issues that I don't think can be fully addressed in just the next few weeks. I would have raised them last week, but there was no public comment at last week's meeting, so I'm sorry to put you in a position where I'm asking you to reverse a decision, but I think that the referendum will have a better chance of passing if we have this kind of surety. Thank you so much for listening.
Is there anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Cumnik. I live at 115 Old Common Road. I've spent a lot of time listening to many very intelligent people speak here, and I wanted to thank you for all the time and effort that you spend in this. I know that it's not easy to compile all of this information, as well as hear people continually questioning your decisions. I think it's really important for it to be said that we cannot continue to drag our feet. You are appointed officials, appointed by our elected officials, appointed by people that we, as a town, elected, and so I think that it's really important for us to put some faith in the fact that you all have done your due diligence, and you've listened and collected all the data. I know for a fact that Downs Construction and TSKP held numerous public comments to listen to everybody's thoughts and opinions. Now is not the time for us to continually reverse our decisions. We have to keep going forward. My own children are not going to benefit from this, unfortunately, because this town has dragged its feet on this renovation that has been a long time coming. So I think we cannot afford to continue to do that. And so my point is that, and I wanted to say thank you one more time.
Do you have any other public comment? Go ahead.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I have great concerns regarding the Webb school and turning it into a 5-6, because now you have to, now it's more busing, more cost to the town taxpayer. And I think that this whole issue of busing, which costs us a tremendous amount of money every year, we should be looking at that and trying to understand that it's not going to work well for the taxpayer in the long run, having Webb as a 5-6 and children being trucked in from all over, and as well as others that need to be transported. So, and I also have an issue with how many bill, how many, how many real seats are we going to have? Are we going to exceed the amount of seats we have today? Or after we go through all of these five schools, are we going to end up with the same amount of seats? Or less? Or more? I'd like to hear more about that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation and discussion of conceptual costs for building a new school in the first referendum encompassing the new school renovation of Webb into a 5-6 and the renovation of Charles Wright Elementary. Come on up.
Good evening. You're going to hear very little from me today. My time is sunsetting as we get more and more real on this, but basically...
Where's John with IT when we need him, right?
Like, just give me the number.
Maybe it froze a little bit.
Let me see. Maybe. Let's see. Hey! This never happens when I use my computer. Okay. So anyhow, so I'm just going to speak to the first piece, which is Phase 1 through 3, which is some of the, we heard some of the public comment, and I'll try to address some of that in the flow. But basically, we're to the point here where Downs will take over, and they will show you what it's going to mean to build these first three schools as that first bundled referendum. And then we'll talk about the rest of the comprehensive plan on the back end. So Phases 1 through 3, thank you for the public comment. I mean, this body has listened very hard from the onset to the community, and to your credit, you listened again. And so we've taken this Highcrest, the new Highcrest site across the street from Highcrest, and we've reworked it a little bit based on the continued input on the educational specifications and the phasing plans and the overall bringing a certain amount of equanimity to the educational environment to all the K-4 schools. So this will become your, not only serve as the new Highcrest, but it will become the first of what will be four K-through-4 schools. It is, instead of that initial linear shape, it's taken on more of a T shape, and that's... Well, first I'll talk about the site. The site plan more or less remains, as we have discussed in the past, with good entrance curb cuts right off of Highland Street. Car traffic would enter and go through a loop on the left. Bus traffic would come in and divert, sorry, I'm backwards here. Car traffic would come in and go on a loop to the right and exit out onto Highland again, and bus traffic would come in and divert to the left and exit onto Collier. Behind the school, on the upper field, would be a dedicated playground, and then that would open the rest of the existing agricultural field remain. And then, as you went down the road to Collier, that larger lower field would be, would be improved with playfields, additional playfields for the town, some of which will be reimbursable as part of the school construction program. And then everything to the north would remain more or less as it is, as a natural habitat with, you know, you may recall that the wetlands, they extended the wetlands up through the middle, and we could incorporate that into, we could develop that into educational space for either outdoor education, stations about the water cycle, agricultural education. There's a range of possibilities on the remainder of the Kaisha parcel. I got a little ahead of myself and excited to talk about the building, but I'll talk about it in more detail now. As part of the K-through-4 program, you'll recall, as a way to bring more or less good flexibility to each of these four K-through-4 elementary schools, we're going to build grade teams of three classrooms, which allows a good deal of flexibility. There would, in addition, be a swing classroom incorporated into every K-through-4 academy so that when you get a demographic surge within a district, you can incorporate it without having to shuffle kids around throughout the district. What's a nice feature of the new Highcrest is those light-green classrooms along the front of the building, which are five pre-K classrooms. So this represents an expansion of the Webb pre-K program. Those won't become necessarily pre-K classrooms until Webb renovation is complete, but those five classrooms plus the swing classroom will allow this building to take the K-through-6 load of Highcrest on day one. As soon as it's complete, all the Highcrest kids can move into this seamlessly. The other thing is the purplish and blue pieces are the gymnasium, the stage, the cafeteria. All of that sits behind the admin wing, which sits prominently on the front of the site to be able to monitor comings and goings, but all the purplish and light-blue pieces are all pushed to one side of the school, so in the evenings and weekends, those can be opened up to the public without opening the classroom wings up to the public. In other words, you can zone the building to be a much greater public asset without having people wandering throughout your entire building, like you have, say, at the current Highcrest building. You know, you, you pretty much have full access to that school if you're using the gym, or if you're using the cafeteria, or the library. You can wander around. And then underneath that T shape are the older grades. In other words, as the site falls, falls to that lower field along Colliers, we're able to tuck in underneath there what will become initially for Highcrest, grades 5 and 6, but then, once the Webb renovations are complete, then grades 3 and 4 will take that So that's more or less a vision of some of the potential that could happen to a building on that site. This is by no means a final design, but it does represent a pretty good allocation of not only the total square footage that you will need based on your ed spec, but pretty good fundamentals on how to lay out an elementary school that meets the goals that we heard from you and we heard from Weathersfield School System and the administrators. So again, with the new Highcrest, it's anticipated that this building, as a new building, can be built discreetly without displacing any of your current K-through-6 schools. As an all-new school, it may take a little longer than 14 months, right? So we're going to get, try to get an earlier start. I won't go too much into the schedule. But then, upon completion, the Highcrest population rolls into this school. Some older grades will be in preschool rooms, but that's okay. We'll, we'll make that work for a year. And then the Webb kids, who are only two grades per classroom, will move into a very spacious Highcrest school, right? They'll have a lot of extra room at that point in time.
Michael, can I ask a question?
Yes, Kate.
During that transition, will the preschool kids still also go to Highcrest?
I think it, that's to be determined. I mean, I think you have options. Would be the shortest way I can answer that, but I think there's so much capacity in Highcrest that it would be easy to adapt adjacent to the existing Highcrest kindergarten rooms, a suite of classrooms, to take the current three classrooms of preschool that you have at Webb. I, I don't get to make that decision, right? That's not only for a future architect, but future superintendent. But I, I don't think that's the only option, but that seems fairly intuitive to me as a, as a good choice.
I guess my question is, capacity-wise, is that something that Highcrest could handle? Yeah.
Yeah. Let's recall that, from a student population standpoint, well, Highcrest and Emerson-Williams are the two largest, this column one and two, and Webb may not be the smallest school population, but they're second only to Charles Wright as, from a population standpoint. So there's plenty of room in a re-populated old Highcrest. Let's talk about Webb briefly. I've flashed these drawings from time to time for you all, just to, as we tried to work our way through what we were hearing about the swing site, you know, to assuage concerns that we were, we were making progress on Phase 2 and 3. But I'm just going to take a brief amount of time here to talk about Webb. When you look at the Webb site plan, it's virtually unchanged into, as to what it is today. As part of this project, all of that paving will be redone, right? It'll be an all-new site with new plantings in the courtyard, new pavings, new striping, new reallocation. And then the building, you can see the gray profile on the first floor. Most of that remains, and that's the gray donut. Most of that remains, and that's the gray donut shape, and all that we demolish is the back end of the auditorium, and then the glass bridges slash ramps that run across the bus drop-off. On the upper level, or really, I guess what I'll call the lower level, depends on how you, when you count that two-story wing that runs north-south, we will, again, demolish the front end of that and then gut that classroom wing. Then, the idea is you would come back in and build across the top where you demolished everything out again. You would build new, better music rooms behind the auditorium at the level of the stage, and you would build administration down low at the parking lot, and then you would load the top of that, the upper part of that, with additional classrooms. So what that looks like is a web that looks like this, which essentially has, does two things. Every classroom in web is the same size, and it matches the size that they have in elementary school. So this is part of creating a coherent and cohesive classroom environment for all grades pre-K through 6. And the classroom count is greatly increased because we've built now where the glass bridges connectors are, we've built a two-story wing across there, and we've repacked them with classrooms and science rooms. So the classroom count is raised up to the level that is at Silas Dean. Historically, web has been limited by a small classroom count, so this right sizes it. On the left hand of this diagram, the partitioning may look very similar. In other words, the cafeteria barely changes. We bulge it out a little bit into the courtyard, and the extent of the auditorium and the gymnasium remain unchanged. That allows us not to have to go in and rework the structure on those long spans that create a columnless space in those areas, but nevertheless, they get completely gutted and refinished with all-new sports floor, all-new auditorium seats, all-new acoustic partitions, new stage curtain, new stage flooring, new ceilings, new lighting, new IT. Everything's brand-new in those areas. And then, the bar across the bottom, that pink and lavender bar across the bottom, which is the, used to be the old wood shop and tech ed shop for the, when it wasn't intermediate school, is now three pre-K classrooms, gets redone as open-floor fitness space because you need more teaching spaces, stations for a 5-6 academy than you need, PE teaching stations for a 5-6 academy than you need for a elementary school, and then, I believe that's an additional art room at the bottom. And then, the lower level of that becomes another grade. We're able to reconfigure this such that you get a bundle of, you get teams. You get a 5th grade team with that bright blue special ed and support space, another 5th grade team with a bright blue special ed and support space. So we're able to reallocate those and bundle those, just like we did in the K through 4 schools. Remember, you remember the bundle of three classrooms with the support spaces next to them. So we're creating little clusters of teams that help break down the school into more, into little, into houses for each grade. This is a radical renovation of web, and it's a lot of square footage, so when we discuss a 14-month project, this will be the most challenging one, just because of the order of magnitude of square footage. It helps that we're not really reworking these large spaces, and it helps that it's relatively contained on that site, but to the public comment, this is, this will be a, while the new High Crest school is relatively simple because you're out on your own, lots of space and free coming out of the ground, this one, if you could get an early start, it would be great. Charles Wright. You'll recall from our early analysis, the greatest challenge from Charles Wright is the cafeteria and gym block, which sits right up against Knott Street. Not only does that kind of block off the school from the public, but it literally blocks traffic from being able to get off of Lot, Knott Street, onto the site. The other challenge with Charles Wright, such that any of these things are challenged, is after it was initially built more or less like a tic-tac-toe board, some architect came in and filled in the middle squares with additional classrooms and essentially orphaned in each of the, in that act orphaned two pairs of classroom in each corner from getting any windows. So the idea here is you demolish the gymnasium and cafeteria, and you rebuild it in the back of the site. Those are, those, Downs could comment on this, I don't necessarily see those as heavy lifts from a construction standpoint. Those are relatively straightforward spaces to build. They're large, but a cafeteria and a gym fundamentally only has four walls, right? So you get pretty good yield, and they only have four corners. The middle parts of rooms are pretty easy to build. It's the corners and edges that you spend a lot of time on. So Charles Wright should go in a relatively orderly fashion. You can see from the demolition, the cross-hatched area, essentially, we're undoing the first addition that was made to Charles Wright. We're going in and within melon baller and scooping out those additions. We think we have a pretty good shot at doing this because we're leaving the original structure that was meant to stand by itself intact, so it should come out relatively cleanly. And then, we come back and fill in. Again, you see the cluster of three classrooms, so that is a house, that is a grade. Every time you see three classrooms bundled together like that, that's either grade 1 or grade 4, but they're all together as a single identity. The darker green is the kindergarten wing, which is more or less a renovation of that existing wing beyond. We did throw one of the grades forward a little bit at the bottom of the page there to help re-enclose that courtyard. That's one of the charming features of Charles Wright is that existing courtyard, and it's nice to try to capture it on one side so it's not just opened out to the parking lot. You actually enter into a space rather than a, you know, wide-open piece like that. We didn't show a lot of repartitioning, say, of the special ed wing or of the admin wing. Again, we're not the architects on this. We're just more or less preserving that amount of program in the building to make sure that it's suitable, and it, from all intents and purposes, it appears suitable for the generic K through 4 ed spec to meet that. So upon completion, then, the Charles Wright kids that had moved into old High Crest, and again, they're kind of swimming in old High Crest because by this point in time, it's only the K-4 population of Wright. They come back to this, and even though, for instance, the media center hasn't moved one inch in the plan, it'll be completely redone. If skylights are desired, we'll certainly make sure that the skylight is a brand-new skylight that's warranted for 20 years with a brand-new roof, so Sally won't have to fix it for the first 20 years, maybe. Regardless, that's the plan for Charles Wright. I just want to, real quick, try to remember some of the other things that were discussed as part of the public comment. I'm not sure if I followed a discussion about whether Charles Wright or Hamner should have equal classrooms or comparable classrooms. I just, I understand those two words, I just don't understand their significance in that sentence. I just want to reiterate for this committee, we believe the charge is that as we complete these K through 4 schools, every school will have the same classroom count, the same classroom size, and be geared for the same classroom population. That population, for what it's worth, will meet your current population, plus have what we anticipate to be about a 10% swing. That's based on the two demographic studies that were done in 2018 and 2022, where they were predicting that the elementary school population could rise by as much as 10%. We are confirming that demography as we speak. That's a requirement of the grant. We have to essentially, like teachers tell their students, we have to show our work, and we have to say, these K through 4 schools will not be oversized. They will, we're not building one extra seat than what you need based on your highest projected enrollment in the next eight years, okay? And just for kicks, every time you apply for a new grant, which will be every year after your first successful referendum, you will have to update that demographic study and pick the highest number for, within that next eight-year window. Any questions about Phases 1 through 3? All right.
Thanks, Michael. Now, the fun part, the numbers. Before we get into the specific numbers of each project and the two referendums that we plan on embarking upon, we thought it made sense to talk briefly about what consists a project budget. Now, I know some of you on this committee are in construction to some extent every day and hear these terms and the acronyms, so on and so forth, but some of you aren't, and certainly, a great deal of the public are not. So when we're talking about a construction budget, we're talking about two main components. Number one, the construction hard cost, or the tangible aspect of this construction endeavor that Weathersfield's about to go on. Those hard costs, those tangible costs are the geotechnical and hazardous material work potentially, the trade costs, the plumbers, the electricians, the steel, the concrete, the site improvements that we make associated with the actual school that we're talking about at that phase, any temporary construction measures that we implement, fences that go up, temporary driveways, logistics-type things, safety issues, those are all considered to be part of construction hard costs. And last but not least, a construction contingency. So eventually, your construction manager that you select will have a guaranteed maximum price likely that will encompass the construction hard cost value of the total budget. The other component is the soft cost, the intangible aspect of a total project budget. So new furniture, new fixtures for your school, new equipment, an owner's project manager being selected to work with the overall team to, you know, tutor the project from beginning to end. Traffic studies, owner's contingency, professional fees for architects and engineers are considered soft costs, bonds and insurance, builder's risk insurance, and moving costs. So hard costs, the tangible, soft cost, intangible, added together is your total project budget. Now, we're going to talk about referendum number one, which of course is High Crest, Samuel Webb, and Charles Wright. So on the screen here, we have put the individual projects in bar chart form, starting with the grant application that we're working diligently on with Weathersfield to achieve by 6:30 of '25, June 30th of '25, in the green.
I'm sorry to do this to you, but I'm going to do this, and maybe they can see it.
It's going to carry through.
Oh, it's going to slide through? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I didn't, I didn't understand.
We're on a fancy business development presentation. No problem. So September of '25 would be the initial referendum, and then, that period after that, assuming approval, of course, you're going to embark upon RFP processes for architects and construction managers and OPMs, and then approximately in January, you're going to begin a pre-construction process. So the pre-construction process is the designing of the project, the local and state approvals, and getting through everything that you need to do to ensure that you're on budget, budget at various cycles of drawing, development, completion, and then on to a bid period, which would be approximately January and February of 2026, sorry, '27. And then, construction for High Crest would be approximately March 1st of 2027, and being completed by the end of summer of 2028, so the kids can move in, the first set of kids can move in for that start of school, approximately September 1st of 2028. So we've done that for all three schools for referendum one, which you'll see in a moment, and then the remaining three schools for the eventual referendum two. So High Crest, we're looking at a total project cost, again, based on the description I gave a few moments ago, both hard and soft costs of $61,500,000 rounded off. It's important to point out that that consists of a approximate 47% state reimbursement, which would be about $27,500,000, which would mean that the cost to the town of Weathersfield would be about $34 million, okay? Because based on the reimbursement rate for a new building is in the 46% range. Now that I finished the first school, I want to stress to everyone on the committee, and certainly in the public, these are conceptual estimates, they're opinion of cost, they are not bids. Eventually, there will be bids. No question, the idea is that these values will be sufficient to handle the eventual cost, but they are in no way considered final numbers at this point. We expect to be within it, but there is a lot of process that has to go forward to get to the true numbers, which gets culminated in a bidding process, and again, as I said earlier, an eventual guaranteed maximum price. I will total all these numbers in the end, so don't worry. Now, we're going to move over to Samuel Webb.
That was fancy.
Not bad. I won't take credit for it. So we're looking at a total project cost for Samuel Webb of about $106 million. Of that, you're looking at a $58 million state reimbursement and a $48 million cost to the town of Weathersfield. Again, that is a project that would start in the summer of '28, and that's where we would begin to get on that 14-month approximate cycle to be able to complete these over a beginning of a summer and by the end of the following summer, so that kids can get shuffled right back into that new school and on to the next one. Next school would be Charles Wright, so we're looking at about $57 million total for that, and about $31 million in state reimbursement, and about $26,600,000 for approximate cost to the town of Weathersfield. And that job, of course, goes all the way out to the summer of 2030. So total project cost for referendum number one would be $224 million approximately rounded off. State reimbursement would be in the range of $116,400,000, and the approximate cost to Weathersfield for that first referendum would be just over $107 million, referendum number one. So I'll stop there for any questions.
Can you walk us through why the cost for web is going to be so much more than the new construction for the new High Crest and the renovation for Charles Wright?
Well, we're dealing with square footage in part. If you look at, we've got a High Crest that's at 53,000 square feet. We're renovating web at 87,850 square feet. The cost per square foot numbers candidly are similar. The renovations are a hair less, but I think, as you know, in your day-to-day life, you know, those numbers are creeping closer and closer in terms of a renovation into a new addition. The benefit, of course, is the reimbursement level, new versus existing, and then, we're dealing with about $41,560 at Charles Wright, so there you're seeing the cost differences there.
So that represents pretty much square footage difference?
Correct, yeah. Yeah. I mean, there is some idiosyncrasies on each individual project, the size of the actual additions, the square foot of the renovation, you know, so that is influencing to some level. We did temper the site development activities, you know, which have variables from site to site, and those are reflected in our conceptual estimates.
Can you remind me how many students we're reflecting? I just want to make sure we're reminding ourselves that these aren't apples to apples in terms of the number of kids in Highcrest versus Webb, for example.
Yeah, I don't have that info, but yeah.
So a standard reconfigured K through four is 315 students. So the new Highcrest is 315 students plus 90 preschoolers because you have five preschool classrooms. You'll actually get more than that because you do preschool with two shifts, but they don't count that way from a stated enrollment standpoint. So that's why, for instance, New Highcrest is 53, while Charles Wright, which claims to be an equal-sized school, is 41.5. Okay? So I think that, I think it's 315 plus 90. So New Highcrest is 405. I'm cloudy on the Webb enrollment, other than I'll say, let's keep in mind, it's the same enrollment that's currently at Silvestine, right? Because it's every fifth grader and every sixth grader. And I just can't remember that number right now. But then Charles Wright would be built back again for that 315 plus the 10%. So let's call it 340, 345, somewhere around there.
Are we getting the full reimbursement numbers for the auditorium at Webb?
For Webb, you will.
Yeah.
To Rich's question, that is also another driver. I mean, it is a square footage, but let's also keep in mind that we're going to have to put in the money for the auditorium. Highcrest is reimbursed at 10% less per dollar than all of these other schools. That's because new schools are reimbursed less than renovated schools. But once, once you get over that lift, you'll get the higher reimbursement on the remainder of these schools. And I believe these numbers reflect an estimated 2% in ineligible.
Correct, I was going to hit that.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Good. I think it's important to point out that we have the 46% for the renovation and the 56%, I'm sorry, the 46% for the new building and the 56% for the renovation. But there's going to be a likelihood of some ineligible expenses when the time comes. So we've tempered those back by approximately 2% in these estimates that we have on the screen to try to account for the eventual ineligible expenses that will come to some fruition down the line.
But what's an example of, you know, generally, or often ineligible expense, just so we all?
In general terms, typically, it's work that's outside of the property line. It's off-site work. There could be something from a change order perspective that would be considered ineligible down the line. Those are the kind of things that would encompass that.
I have a project right now where a softball field isn't about ineligible.
Right.
Part of the initial.
Do you guys have any ways that we might be able to increase the state reimbursement? I remember when, when you were interviewed, you said you got somebody 80% and, you know, I told you I was going to hold you to it. So what do we, you know, yeah, no pressure, I'm looking right at you, so. So do you have any ideas or is there anything that we could potentially do or?
The short answer is if you're doing a straight-up grant application at this point in time, your best, your highest reimbursement is going to be based on renovate as new. And that's going to be the numbers that you're seeing here. The 80% relates to a diversity grant where you're trying to reconcile a violation that you've been cited, the district has been cited for by the State Board of Education. Fortunately, you have not been cited. I'll try to put a positive spin on it. It's possible you could participate in school choice programs and take students from out of the districts for certain bonuses, but that would have to be made at the BOB level. You have, you know, you have to sign up for it to receive the money and then you actually have to take kids in. You can't just take the money in and not take kids in. So it's possible, for instance, if your enrollment stays down, you could, as we look at each school, we could consider that, that you would write that into the ed spec in each of these grant applications. In other words, you would start to tweak that standard K through four ed spec that you'd be issuing for each of these to try to take advantage of those additional fundings.
The state delegation?
So we are, we are currently working with, all of us here, all the professionals here are working with towns who have talked, who have reached out to their legislative representatives and negotiated a larger reimbursement rate, which, and I know three clients of mine that are currently doing that in this legislative session. So, but as far as the straight-up grant, which is the safest way to play this, when you're reporting out to the public what the cost to the town is going to be, these numbers really haven't changed much in the 20 years I've been working in the state.
I didn't know, like, maybe because we're innovating, an agricultural type thing, there might be a way to, you know, I, I, more money?
So a lot of the additional monies, I was going to say additional monies, that some of which we talked about in the interview, actually comes about at the next stage when the state tries to rule things as ineligible. And that's, you know, we just talked about the 2%, what's in that. There's a lot of things that they routinely will, not routinely, but they'll decide that they're not going to be eligible. And we and other firms have had some success in persuading them, things that they initially say are ineligible are in fact eligible. But I think we might have cited in the interview in Middletown, they had told them their auditorium was going to be ineligible, you know, like all of Webb. And we persuaded them that, you know, it should be eligible and demonstrated why, and they agreed, but that was a huge swing in Middletown's favor. So the next stage is where also some of these opportunities will come forward.
And ineligible costs is if, for some reason, the architect that you hired to do Webb has to go out into the street to make some infrastructure improvement, either with the sewer pipe that goes out to the street, has to drop in and do a electrical manhole, has to monkey around with a meter that may be, a water meter that may be out in the street. Because it's beyond the property line, the state loves to call that out and say, no, that's a town infrastructure issue, not a school grant issue. So typically, you'll get dinged for the, whatever, $18,000 of digging you do in the public right away.
And just to these, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
These, these numbers, I think, and clarify if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but just for the public's justification, these are kind of the reasonable expectations of cost and the reasonable expectations of reimbursement so that we can get this to bond council, so that they can phrase the referendum question. It doesn't mean that we can't ask for more in reimbursement or fight for more, it's just that this, these are the numbers that would be reasonable to expect on a bond, a bond referendum.
And that's correct. The detail beyond, behind this will be what's used for the grant application.
But the other big thing difference is the double payment law, but it's not present in the Highcrest because it's a grant building, so that's, that's a significant difference.
Right.
Michael, how close are you on all of these buildings? I mean, I know that Webb and, and Charles Wright are going to be renovations, so we're working with existing square footage, but on, on space standards, how close are we going to be to what the, what the maximum requirement is going to be? I mean, I think you said it's going to be 315 students, right? So there's an allocation on square footage per building for each of these, each of these structures. How close are we that we, we're not going to have to go for a space waiver, which, as we all know these days, are becoming more and more difficult to, to, to get approved?
Yeah, I think we're right there.
Right there?
You're, you're looking at gross square footage, which are different than the number you put on the grant because these guys count buildings bigger than what grant does. That grants don't consider the outside wall.
Gross square footage, outside of wall to outside of walls.
I don't want to get into that too much, but you're right. All of this is based on, starts with the student population.
Yeah.
And you go out from there. You have to tailor your ed spec more or less to comport for that.
All right. So, you know, we have the ed spec, right? But then as, and the ed spec is basically a guidance for, for the architect that gets hired to come up with a space program, right? So when the architect is hired and they start to go through the details, right now, we don't have the details, right? This is kind of like, you know, big picture. But we get into the details of the project and we start, the architect starts, starts to program the space, what is the likelihood of the building getting larger because, you know, we need to put this in there, we got to make sure we have that, and, you know, it balloons by 4,000 or 5,000 square feet, which, you know, at a certain cost per square foot is going to be significant.
Right. And where Rich is, where Rich is headed with this is the state will only fund up to a maximum grant square footage that's based on square footage. You're more than welcome to exceed that, but you pay full freight for every square foot above that. So that is a significant holdback that the state will put on you. So again, I think we're, in the diagrams that I showed you, we're, we're dead on on where we need to be from a grant square footage. And it was important, particularly, let's take Webb, for instance. Initially, Webb struck me as a very inefficient school because that central corridor that goes around, while it's sometimes double loaded, sometimes not, is almost 11 feet wide and it goes around the entire school.
Right.
And it's often only going around a one-story building. And knowing that Webb had not only a small classroom count, but also among the smallest classroom sizes per classroom unit, I was concerned about in the office what would happen when we added a bunch of classrooms. But it actually tracked pretty well, and I think it's because that one-story wing that has the auditorium cafeteria and everything else is actually pretty efficient. So we are right on where, based on the projected enrollment for Webb, we're right on where you should be for a 5-6 grade level at that population.
I'm sure, and I have a lot of questions as it relates to cost, so if you don't mind, if I just kind of go to these guys. So let's talk about the cost for construction, right? So what, what are you coming up with on a cost per square foot? Let's start with, with Highcrest, cost per square foot.
Chip, you have those numbers?
Highcrest, the new total, you want the construction or the project?
Construction cost.
Okay, we are at 906.
906, okay. And, and that's in today's dollars?
And that is actually in today's.
Today's dollars, right.
Numbers that you see here, we have escalated.
You have escalated to the midpoint of construction? Okay. All right. So, so starting with $906, okay. So you're escalating for, for Highcrest and you're using 906 as a baseline to escalate to the midpoint for Highcrest, and then you're going to take that out? And how much are you, how much are you escalating on an annual basis?
We have 6% per year right now.
Okay.
Rich, if I can just, I'm sorry, before we go too far into the weeds. We are, we are not making a decision on any of this tonight. We are going to have another meeting.
Okay.
Our next regular meeting, which you'll see on the agenda, is scheduled for May 12th. That is our regular meeting, but we're anticipating that we'll probably have to call a special meeting.
Yeah.
Where we'll really dig into this. And I'm just going to also request that a copy of this and the cost schedule that you're pulling out to read to us gets sent to us in advance of that next meeting so that we can all kind of.
Yeah.
Formulate questions, get on the same page and, and really see everything in front of us, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Just to keep tonight going.
So are you suggesting that you don't want me to keep on asking?
As much as I love you, but I'm just like.
No, I appreciate that.
Well, just because, because I feel like this, this warrants a much deeper or thoughtful conversation where we're all not just seeing this.
Well, and that, and that's good, right? Because I didn't realize that we were actually going to follow up with this.
Yeah.
But I, I do want to just understand some of the assumptions, so I won't go into too much detail, but I'm going to continue.
Okay.
So, all right, so we, we have an idea.
Yeah. Let me get my stopwatch.
Me too. Okay. So, so we understand where the cost of construction is and you're inflating it and you're, and you're carrying 6% escalation per year. That's great. Okay, so that, that's great on, on the, on the hard cost side, on the soft cost sides, right? Can you maybe share with us some of your assumptions on, on what you're carrying so for like professional fees and, you know, OPM fees and things like that, your contingencies?
Right now, Rich, we've got 20% for soft costs. So we.
Just across the board.
Across the board. So we have an additional percentage within the design and estimating within the hard cost, knowing that it's really pre-conceptual at this point, lack of a better term, in terms of, you know, normally at an SD stage, you'd be at 10% design and estimating contingency. We're at 15.
Yeah.
Within, within the hard cost number. To know that there has to be some flexibility from both on the hard cost side and the soft cost side, but we wanted to be true to, you know, a typical 20% plus or minus for, you know, a state-funded school construction project on the soft cost side.
Okay. All right. So, so you're, you're carrying 20% overall for, for soft costs, right? And then you're, you're escalating that also on a 6% basis?
Right.
Okay.
Total project.
Okay. All right. And that, that's fine. What I would suggest you do, though, is to maybe test those assumptions on, on the 20% to, you know, to see, you know, if, if you're going to make an assumption that your architectural fees are going to be a, a certain percentage, whether it's six, seven, or whatever percent it is, that you, you kind of plug that in, plug in a cost for an OPM, you know, look at what the, the FFNA budget is for, you know, the project and see whether or not that fits within the 20%. I know that, you know, you guys have done a lot of these projects and so, you know, you've seen the, you've seen the budgets and you, you know, 20% might work, but something that you might want to consider.
Yeah. Very, very good advice. I think what I was going to continue with in terms of an overall budget discussion that Lauren hit again, again, we're talking about conceptual opinion of cost, we have to drive more questions, we're going to be doing more presentations, we're going to dive deeper. But probably going back to some earlier comments from the public about where do these numbers come from, right? Are they Hartford numbers? Are they New Haven numbers? Are they Bridgeport numbers? They are Connecticut school construction project numbers. So in general terms, and as you know, Rich, most of the contractors that are bidding on these jobs are similar from project to project, whether it be in Cromwell, whether it be in Bridgeport, whether it be in Hartford. Yes, there's other provisions of parameters that some of those communities put on their projects, but for a large part, it's the same contractor base that is DAS pre-qualified, that is accustomed to bidding these trade packages that eventually your construction manager will develop. So it's based on current data, like literally up to the past few weeks on bid results on brand-new construction projects, on renovations. So it's not just taking one project in Hartford or one project in Bridgeport or New Haven or Cromwell. It's looking at cost per square foot, bid results, and escalating them. So we are doing our due diligence. And to your question, we are seeing total soft cost percentage. Of course, we've consulted with TSKP on a total percentage. That actually led to us saying, okay, let's put a little bit more in D and E because, you know, I'm calling it pre-conceptual. But anyway, in terms of trying to offset that, if we're 22% on soft costs.
Yeah.
Or if we are, you know, a little higher on the hard costs. We're, we're trying to make sure we're being realistic. Again, we're, we're not trying to be low bidder, it's not a bid. We are trying to make sure that someday, when the bids come in, they will be within this number.
Well, and I think you, you raise a good point in the end there because a lot of the projects that came out before COVID and then were, were then kind of greenlit and moved forward in COVID, started to realize that those budgets weren't working, right? Now, we don't know if they're, I mean, you know, knock on wood, we're going to have anything like that, but, I mean, right now, we're faced with, with items like, like tariffs. So I would, I would agree, you're not bidding this, right? So you're not putting a low bid number together. What you're doing is putting a budget together that is going to be something that we're going to be living with for the next.
Correct.
Seven years.
A long time.
Six years. Yeah, right, exactly.
Perfect segue for referendum two.
Can I ask one question before?
Sure, go ahead.
Is this cost including the cost the town has to do for bonding? Or is this just specifically the construction of the schools?
The soft cost is intended to handle whatever those costs are.
It should be in there, right?
Accelerated Phase One, pre-grant approval, we're moving ahead.
Okay. So, sure. Let me move our fancy presentation back a little bit here. It worked. So, let's see. So we're talking about a referendum in September of '25, right? So assuming approval of that, we would suggest that the town relatively immediately embark upon a RFP process for OPMs, construction managers, and architects. And go through that, you know, what could be a relatively lengthy process to, you know, issue those RFPs, take the proposals, have interviews, and make selections, and getting your design team started, okay? So in terms of starting with your design team, let's stick with that for a moment. We are showing January 1st approximately of 2026. So backing up from that, you have submitted a grant application, that grant application has been received by the state of Connecticut, it's been acknowledged. You don't physically have that confirmation of grant commitment yet. You will know that you're on the priority list in early January, but you technically still do not have the formal grant commitment letter from the state of Connecticut until late June, early July of 2026, right? So that means, and other communities have done this, and it's a discussion point that will come up down the line, is that you're making a commitment to move forward with pre-construction services to start the clock, to get your design going, yet you don't have a formal commitment, but in January, you know you're on the priority list. And I think all of us here have said that once a school, in our experience, me over 25 years, and Tom over 25 years, and these gentlemen a little longer, I've never seen a project get rejected if it's on the priority list in January. In other words, you're just waiting for the legislative process to resolve itself, and that comes to a letter to the town last week of June, first week of July, approximately a year later after the application. So that would be a discussion that should happen, but we would recommend it results in a commitment in pre-construction services cost for your OPM, for your CM, not the full construction cost, just pre-construction, and your design team to get, you know, roughly halfway through the design, design development, whatever that expense may be.
And the reason that we're recommending that is the alternative is to wait for your grant commitment, and that pushes everything off by one year. And the cost of one year of delaying all the projects was about $13.5 million. So that's an additional $13.5 million, whereas the, I guess, the money that would be at risk, say, in theory, would be those fees that Jeff talked about, and it's, you know, a million and a half, $2 million or something. And he's correct. As far as I know, in the history of Connecticut, you're on the priorities, you get your grant eventually. So it's a very low risk for a very big gain, because, you know, $13 million isolation, you don't do anything for that. But it is something that you need to be.
So rather than starting construction in, so walk us through the benefits, so that we understand.
Let me ask one question going back. So you would then start your second grant potentially before or after you get your letter?
Right, around this, well.
It's around the same time.
It's around.
2026.
It's June 30th every year.
You're submitting at the same time you're getting, that's right.
Plus or minus a week or two, yep.
And what you're saying, is that true every time? So it's not just this first one where there's this six month? It's every time there's a grant application, it could take a whole year to formally know?
That's correct, but you have the luxury of time on the other ones, which you can submit early enough so that there's no more risk on any of those. It's just the very first one. But the first one, of course, moves them all. And that's why there's such a big downside to waiting, is that it's an additional $15 million.
So what you just suggested, are you showing that graphically up here, or are you showing the worst-case scenario?
We're showing the best case.
The best case?
Yeah, everything would just move one year out.
Out.
If you don't.
Okay, so you're basically, you're showing what you just suggested.
Correct.
We jump-started this.
Right, Connor, 26 instead of 27.
Yeah, it's not the traditional timeline, so we just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that. And then, you know, council will have to decide whether or not they're willing to.
For what risk for?
I mean, odd dollars, because they'll pass the referendum, so they'll be able to do it, but we just need to have that conversation.
So, Rich, September '25 referendum, as we see on the screen, so October, November, December is your RFP process.
Yeah.
And starting in earnest, January 1st.
Before we jump to the next phase, have you guys, have you considered the advisory that the Office of Grand Administration has given on projects where they're telling, they're telling projects to carry a 10% contingency?
Have we considered it in this? Not yet.
Okay, all right. So that wouldn't be in your 20%?
Right.
Well, which is why we've sort of moved, I mean, it's a shell game. We have that money in here, it's in the construction cost right now.
So, yeah, I mean, we have 15% design and estimating contingency in our hard cost number. We have another roughly 5% to 10% in soft cost contingency. So, you know, you start adding those numbers, those are in.
So you're carrying real numbers today, which is 906 per square foot, then you're adding, yeah, but then you're also adding on top of that your design and estimating contingency?
No, that's within the 906.
That's in the 906.
Correct.
So you're really, you're really not carrying that extra 10%?
Well, I mean, it's in the number. It's just, yeah. The other way to look at it is that the 906 is not really 906. It's, you know, 8, 10 contingencies on it.
That's 15% D and E within the 906.
What I'm asking is, generally on these projects, the contingency, the owner's contingency is usually carried at about 5%. OGA, because of everything that's happened over the last couple of years with COVID and so forth, is they've recommended that projects now carry 10% instead of 5%. So it's an additional 5% on top of what you would normally have.
I would suggest that when we provide the committee the detailed breakdown, let's get into those weeds discussions and decide, you know, if there's some other approach we should take as it relates to it, and then make sure we're all on the same page. Okay, let's move on to referendum two. Referendum two, Emerson Williams, dear to my heart, Hamner Elementary. And what we've done here, and it was mentioned a few minutes ago, is the demo of Highcrest as part of referendum two. So the question will be is, how is that going to be approached in terms of what the state is going to expect, which we will weed through in the coming weeks and months? But for purposes of the presentation today, we have it as part of referendum two, okay? So now, these are pretty far out, right? In terms of where we sit today from a date in, you know, completion of Emerson Williams way out in the summer of 2031. So as I said earlier, although we like to advertise and ingest in some of our interviews, we do not possess a crystal ball at Downs Construction. So therefore, we are reporting to you tonight a range of numbers that those renovate as new projects at Emerson, and Hamner will be likely. So from a range perspective on Emerson, 55 to 65 million. State reimbursement approximately 31 to 37. Approximate cost to Weathersfield, 24 to 28, as a range for Emerson Williams, which again would be a renovate-as-new project quite a few years away. Next project would be Hamner, last project, if you will, as we show it right now, from a school renovation perspective, we're looking at 75 to 86 million. And a approximate state reimbursement of 42 to 49, with approximate cost to Weathersfield of 33 to 37. All the way out, completing summer of 2032. Last but not least, as we mentioned, for the purposes of tonight's presentation, we have the demolition of the existing Highcrest School at somewhere in the range of 8 to 9 million dollars. Now, if that were to be done sooner, or, you know, there could be some changes to that number if some rearrangement occurred, but for now, that's what we're looking at. And we're talking about strictly related to the demolition of that school, removal of the foundations, filling in, and topsoil and seed.
Yeah, so just, this is not installation of any field or?
Right, because those would be reimbursement discussions in terms of an OGA grant.
Can you help us understand why the cost of Charles Wright Emerson Williams are similar in Hamner is more?
Well, I think there is some, certainly square footage first and foremost of those schools. I think we've talked about, or Michael primarily has talked about, the size of Hamner, also some of the conversations in terms of historical aspect down there. Those things, I think, are all going to be contributing to, you know, where we sit for a total project cost.
And does the Hamner cost actually include, now that we talked about maybe demolishing the 1971 wing, so that would be part of the estimate there?
No, I believe that's carrying essentially full freight, the square footage of Hamner and renovating.
The whole thing.
As it sits right now, yeah.
I mean, it's just an unknown, Rich. If we can economize it, we will, or if we can find, if in, give me a second. If in 2029, BOE comes up with another program that they want to incorporate that would add population to that school, right, add enrollment to that school, we could do it that way, too, to help fill out the square footage. But that's, again, that's a future architect's issue to.
Right, I mean, that's obviously way down the road. But, I mean, to the point that I made before regarding space waivers, right? If you're going to keep the entire square footage of Hamner, and you're only going to put 315 students into that building, then you're going to be way over the space standards.
Correct, that's right.
And so your reimbursement rate's going to go way down.
You need to right-size the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Well, except that the historic condition, at least.
Or work to right-size the building in the, with the parameters.
Suggested any demolition would be looked at very thinly. So this is a conservative.
I mean, if, I mean, frankly, if, for instance, Board of Ed needed more office space, you could take a wing and turn it into Board of Ed office and do that under VA, or, yeah, if you want to put pre-K classrooms into the east side of town, you could build that into a more robust pre-K program, for instance. So there's other opportunities to either adjust your enrollment or use that square footage for other school construction grant purposes.
That's one of the advantages, again, to splitting into two referendums. In our recent experience in Manchester, sure enough, when they got to Phase Two, the programs kind of changed. They added some sub-separate programs for some kids that they decided to bring into their district and route it to send it to that district. And there were some other programmatic changes that added square footage and cost that had we tried to guess, you know, five years before, we would have missed and we would have been stuck. But allow them to reevaluate the program now after three, four, five years. Where are we today? Where's the world? What are the requirements, what are the mandates that are coming down? Do we need to accommodate, do we need to adjust the programs? You can do that, and then you can adjust these numbers and allow the current package.
Yeah, I mean, all supporting why we're talking about ranges here, right? There's a lot of decisions, it's too far in the future on, you know, being so specific on exactly what's going to occur there. And again, because of what we're doing this year, we're showing a September '28 referendum. Maybe it's not September, maybe it's October, maybe it's November. But it's the concept of that this is a whole new cycle of process that, you know, we'll have built on the success, again, hopefully, for what we've done in a referendum one.
Also, Jeff, also, and it can't be stressed enough, these are preliminary numbers for us to be able to work through. So the disclaimer is going to be for anyone who's going to try to post this on social media and say, these are the numbers, oh my God, these are numbers, we needed a baseline based on numbers and projects that you've currently been associated with, and yet, this is not a set in stone. Needs to be worked on, but it is preliminary, it is a draft, and it is something that is a starting point for this committee and for the project.
A guideline for the town and the residents on what a referendum two in all of '28 could likely be?
I don't want to beat this, but the Hamner cost, that is assuming the existing square footage and assuming it's all being used for educational purposes that are, that are recompensed at the 56%, right? So that's not the scenario we have now, but, you know, if something changes in the future and we can use all the space because they're more, like, as you already suggested, that's what.
I guess what I would say is, yes, within that $11 million range, that option exists, escalated out to that timeframe. That option exists, but that's presented as a range because there's other options that may emerge. In five years, the team that's working with you to assemble that referendum will know a lot more, because you'll already, at that point in time, have two full schools behind you, you'll be finishing up the third. The town will have learned a lot as a community about what these schools can do for you, and you'll be able to address that as you roll through it.
We just suggested that this is a conservative estimate. It could, that's it's not conservative, right? The 75 to 86 million, it could be much higher than that if we're to keep the building as it is and we don't have the number of students necessary for the totality of the square foot, right?
Well, the construction cost won't change, the reimbursement.
Okay, all right, all right, I appreciate, yeah, okay, good, okay, I appreciate that, yeah.
But the other thing is the construction, I mean, the re, the second referendum can start to address some of these issues.
No, I understand, I understand, I'm just trying to understand the numbers as we see it. I realize the whole, you know, there are lots of scenarios that could change.
And we, I mean, we've been together enough that you realize that the four of us here or five of us here are pretty conservative, right? We're not, you know, even though we don't even have the first job, I don't want to be in the position of trying to stand in front of you, trying to explain why we're $10 million short on Hamner all of a sudden. And want to present a range that makes, it gives you, preserve your options and protect you.
All right, so again, up on the yellow box here, we have the total range indicated for this very conceptual opinion of cost for referendum two, quite a few years out, even for the referendum, much less the completion.
That's 2033, not 2030, right?
Correct, you picked up a typo, thank you. We cannot go back in time for those numbers. Any questions on this? We just have a couple more slides to hit to try to address some other community-related questions, perhaps. All right, so we decided to take a high-level look at what site logistics may be for two of the schools. We didn't do them all, but I think we're hearing through the community questions, what is, what are fences, what does it mean, what does access look like, what are we going to see? So our superintendents back at the office took a pass at a conceptual site logistics plan for Samuel Webb. So first and foremost, you'll see that we are suggesting in the construction of Webb, we would. and foremost, you'll see that we are suggesting in the construction of Webb, we would still preserve the fields that everyone uses along Wells 175, which are designated in the beige areas there, of course. The turquoise line would be a approximate location of a minimum six-foot-high construction fence, not like some of the fences I see down on the Silas Dean Highway on some of the projects under construction, but a driven construction fence, top and bottom rail with privacy mesh separating it safety-wise from construction to anybody walking down the sidewalk. We, I mentioned keeping things open, keeping parking open for sports, knowing those are considerations that we certainly, as a construction manager, would want to drive with the building committee and the community as understanding as being important. It may be hard to see, but the bottom right corner is a typical construction scrim that we would put up on our projects that actually brings in the community, a lot of times kids, handing out eight-and-a-half-by-eleven octagon or hexagon pieces of paper, letting them draw what they want to draw, taking that information, incorporating it into the scrim. So when the children are walking down the street, construction's going on, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, look, there's the thing I drew. It's on the fence. So those are the kind of things that we like to do to bring the community in. It's providing safety separation for construction, but it's also bringing excitement and buy-in and, you know, interest into what's going on on the other side of those fences. So quick little snapshot of Sam Webb. And then the new school at High Crest, similar situation, showing how we may put up a construction fence very simply here. Similar privacy mesh, looking at where construction field offices may be with the red boxes in the bottom right corner of the fenced area. But again, stressing that when a construction manager implements these projects, safety and separation is really your first and foremost discussion on how we will deal with confining ourselves to, as a construction manager, to build your project, but being considerate of traffic on adjacent streets, adjacent fields that are being used for sports, adjacent parking lots, all considerations that you'll get into in deep down the line when the time comes. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from us?
So many questions.
We will get to them. Anything? We're good?
Oh.
Thank you.
Sure.
So new business? Does anyone have any new business to bring to the committee? No? You want to talk about the chiller?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The committee is actually the committee for the school advisor committee. Also, one of the tasks is the new chiller and air handler unit at the Silas Dean Middle School. Just wanted to report that the town council did award that contract on Monday. And so we are moving forward to start that project. Again, procurement of equipment is always a moving target, but we are finally moving in the direction of replacing the non-functioning air handler unit and the chiller at Silas Dean Middle School.
Breakfast.
Yeah.
Finally.
Yeah. The next item on our agenda is just that May 12 meeting. So just to reiterate for the public, our next regular meeting is May 12. That will stay on the calendar. If we need to call a special meeting, which I do anticipate, that we will put the agenda on the town website so that the public is aware of when that special meeting will be held. Anything else? All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Rich seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.